Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. We've got quite a few people in attendance. We've got some special guests here. And before we get to the invocations, I see we've got the great Woodrow Wilson High School Band here who will be joining us shortly. But I understand we also have our Lefco class, current class of our Lefco leaders. Are you here? Would you please stand? Welcome each and every one of you guys. Yep. Glad to have you in attendance, any elected officials. I see Ted Lamb in the back. Mr. Lamb from our school board, good to see you. Anyone else here? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, council members, if you would, now please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Reverend Dr. Johnny Drake from the Living Word Victory Center. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Drake. It's always good to see you, sir.
Praise the Lord.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
The council and officers, folks in Portsmouth.
Amen. Join me in a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, I praise you and I thank you and exalt your holy name for extending your mercy and your grace to these your people, elected by the people for this council and chosen by God to stand in the midst of the challenges and difficulties of this year, 2016, for the citizens of this place. We know that there is nothing that we can do in our own strength, but we know that all things do work together for good for those who love the Lord and are called according to his purposes. Thank you, Father, for the words "work together for good." So teach us that even if we disagree, we will not be disagreeable. So, Father, let our will be settled in your purposes, because I know that whatever we do unto the least of these our brothers and sisters, we've done it unto you. Therefore, Father, I stretch out my hands unto thee. There's no other help I know. If thou withdraw thyself from me, whither shall I go? Bless now this prayer for me and these people in the precious name of Shabbos alone, the Prince of Peace, Jesus the Christ, I pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Dr. Drake. Again, sir, it's always good seeing you. Peace be with you. Council members, at this time, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of January the 12th, 2016, a regular meeting of January 12th, 2016, and a call meeting of January 19th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Okay, very good.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'd like to ask the Woodrow Wilson Marching Band to please join Mayor Wright at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk.
The drum line.
Right, face. Oh, where are you?
And as you can see, we also have our AJROCT Rifle Regiment Team that's with us as well. Let me get in here and break in.
Oh, hey, rest. That is.
Mr. Jenkins, you join me here. We'll get up front here so we can be seen.
Yes, sir.
That's right. Now, you know, we're always bragging and talking about things and our young people and our future. And whenever there's great news, like the news we want to share with you this afternoon, we like to recognize and bring these people in so we can all see them, not only here, but at home. Our band here, which is under the great leadership of Mr. Jenkins here and the ROTC, were fortunate this year to go to the Taxpayers Bowl in Gainesville?
Jacksonville.
Jacksonville, Florida. All right, we all know that as the old Outback Bowl, right?
Gator.
Gator Bowl, okay, getting mixed up. All the bowls, right. But I can tell you, when the announcement came out, everyone on social media was putting the word out, "Had you heard about Woodrow Wilson High School and the kids?" And when I saw the performance on the field, Mr. Jenkins, and what you guys were doing, you have no idea what that did. You know, one of our vision principles, we talk about our sense of pride and sense of place, and to see these kids from Woodrow Wilson High School here in the city of Portsmouth on that field. How many were in attendance?
Over 63,000.
Over 63,000 folks and on national television, making us proud. We thought that the least we could do was to invite you up here to publicly thank you for representing us and to say a few words about not only your band, your school, but the trip in general. So if you will.
Yes, sir.
Let's give it to my hand, by the way.
Mayor Wright, the Honorable Members of City Council, and ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
We greatly appreciate your thoughtfulness in recognizing Woodrow Wilson High School tonight. I can assure you that our students served as goodwill ambassadors while we were in Jacksonville, Florida. We would have been justly proud, or you would have been justly proud of them. Everyone commented on their fine manner in which they represented the school, the school division, and their city. I want to publicly thank those individuals and community groups who opened their purse and their hearts to help us raise the much-needed funds so that we could travel to the Sunshine State, where we participated in a nationally televised halftime show. By the way, we are continuing our fundraising efforts so that we can retire the school remaining debt, and we are most grateful for any assistance we receive. Thank you for-
How much debt? How much debt do we have?
Yes, sir. $12,000.
$12,000, all right, we'll get that, all right. Keep going. We're going to retire that debt, okay?
Yes, sir. Thanks for affording our young people opportunities to appear before this distinguished panel and for us in such a positive manner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, would you like to say anything after this?
Mayor Wright, am I on the mic? You should never give a mic to a military officer, because we don't know when to be quiet, but I'm going to just keep it brief. You already heard Mr. Jenkins saying how wonderful it was to go down to Florida and our students and our cadets did an amazing job down there. And again, like we said, we represented you all very well. Once we got off the field on that evening, on the afternoon, quickly they invited us to return next year, actually, this year. So, Mayor, we want to go back.
All right, let's get him around the bar. Thank y'all very much. I saw the nice order that you came in and how you presented yourself and got information. So if the commander could instruct these individuals to do an about-face to these seven members back here that's going to take care of that debt for you, you need to look, you need to look at the people when you're asking for money. So, Commander, if you will.
Oh, take who? Oh, bow, peace! Hooray, kid!
President, you make us proud, very proud. All right, you guys can leave if you like. You don't have to go back to your seats, all right? By the way, as they're leaving, are there any parents here in the audience? Any parents of the kids here? Always want to recognize moms and dads, all right. Great job.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished business, consent agenda, 16-8, use permit and code amendments. Item B, resolution granting the request of Christopher Brown and Olveton Malone for a use permit for a restaurant at One Butterwee Lane. UP 1513, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Item C, ordinance granting the request of the city to amend Appendix B, Uptown D2 District Form Base Code of the zoning ordinance to align with applicable updated laws and guidelines, including removing references to where clearly visible from the street exempts design elements more than 40 feet from a required building line or street space. Type II site plans and administrative adjustments. CA 1503, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Item D, ordinance granting the request of the city to amend the zoning ordinance to allow food trucks to operate on private property. The amendments will insert a new section, 40.1-4.5F8, food trucks on private property into the zoning ordinance, and will amend table 40.1-4.5A, permitted temporary uses and structures, and sections 40.1-4.5C1, retail sales or display of goods from vehicles, and 40.1-8.3 definitions. CA 1504, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. I have a speaker on item D only, and we'll call forward Mr. Mark Godolda-Kiatrowski.
And then after he speaks, we will vote on all of these collectively, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I want to ask you one more time to remove the provisions for food trucks in neighborhoods. I gave you some arguments last time against that. I want to provide some additional information about it, all of which was in the testimony I presented to the Planning Commission. I believe that the provisions for food trucks in neighborhoods are essentially, are functionally The requirements are that food trucks prepare fresh food, that you can't pick up frozen food from Sam's Club and heat it up on a food truck. It must be food that is cooked fresh. Another provision is that there will be no selling from the food truck to the general public. It is only to people who are attending an event. And the third provision, this one probably is enforceable, but it's undesirable. And that is that no one may have a food truck more frequently than three times a month. Let me deal with the last one first. To have a food truck at a residence in a neighborhood three times a month is excessive. It's an imposition on the neighborhood. It's an imposition on the neighbors. I don't understand why you would write in such permissive language. Once a quarter, okay, but three times a month, it's unrealistic, and it taxes the infrastructure in a neighborhood. You're talking about neighborhoods with narrow streets in many instances. You're talking about large gatherings of people as many times as three times a month. Insofar as prepared fresh, you can enforce that if it's at an event, which is one of the other allowances in this ordinance, because you will have city staff making the rounds of those trucks. But buried away in a neighborhood somewhere, I doubt that you're going to have a health inspector making the rounds every time somebody puts in a food truck permit. And so it's going to be up to the neighbors to complain about it. I doubt that anybody is going to be an expert on the provisions of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I think the speaker's concerns are well-taken. In fact, from the food safety standpoint, I think I've mentioned that on numerous occasions. I think the neighborhood allowance of the trucks in the neighborhoods brings up a good point concerning our ability to inspect them. I take it most of those will probably occur on the weekends, and as most of us know, inspectors aren't out typically on the weekends. I also shared with the city manager another concern that I have, and that's insurance. All of these trucks are normally large trucks. They could potentially do city damage to city property as well as personal property and injury. So I think we would be missed, especially since a lot of these will come from other localities. I think we would be remiss if we did not have a requirement that the trucks have insurance. So most of the trucks won't be operating this time of the year in the winter, so I think there's time to revisit those provisions. And I don't think there's anything major there, but I'd rather get it right going into it before some of these incidences occur. If there's concurrence, that particular provision, I would like to see staff come back with some recommendations to avoid some of the things the speaker has mentioned, as well as the insurance.
I thought we covered all that ground, and maybe Mr. Baldwin can probably help us with that. But let me go to the Vice Mayor, and then we'll try to cover both of them. Yes, ma'am?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. Mr. Baldwin, can you help us there?
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council. I'll answer what I can, take them in reverse. Let me just mention one thing you are aware from the last presentation on the 12th. We do have a city manager's guidelines that will be in place in terms of permitting food trucks to operate within the city. Covers all of these issues. It gives us much broader latitude to terminate someone from being able to operate in the city in the event they are not complying with these provisions. As you know, enforcing the zoning code, if it's just a zoning issue, is much more complicated, much more time-consuming than being able to do some of the guidance of the city manager's authority to approve these food trucks. So we think in terms of being able to deal with issues that crop up, neighborhood complaints, we've got a pretty quick ability to respond to that through terminating someone's permission to operate within the city, in addition to what would be allowed in the guidelines. In terms of the insurance, the insurance requirement's already existing. When they go through the process, there would be a full insurance requirement to make sure they're not going to be harming city property, any type of damage they might do. So we can get the details on that, but there is an insurance requirement already in place. And as far as the question about operating in neighborhoods, I will say that like most complaints we do with zoning are almost all complaint-driven anyway. If neighborhoods are having issues or concerns, we certainly would want to hear about it. We don't have, you know, an army of inspectors looking at all things all the time. We certainly respond when we're aware there's an issue. And again, I think with the policy of having the city manager with approval authority for every food truck coming in here, we've got about as much leverage as we need to enforce the regulations that are proposed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moody, you got a question for?
One last question, Mayor. Mr. Baldwin, how about the bonding for tax collection?
Yeah, and that's in place. And we are continuing to work with the Commission of Revenue to make sure we have all that stuff straight. We've mentioned in our minimum materials we presented to you, there may be some issues as we implement. We may need to come back and tweak depending on how this works. It's a pretty broad program we're putting in place, but we do have all those provisions in place to make sure all the taxes are properly paid, as far as getting business licenses and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Finally, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, so, Mr. Baldwin, as far as the insurance provision, is there a particular amount, or is it that they just have to have regular?
There is a particular amount I don't have in front of me. I believe it's a million dollars liability, but I'll have to get the exact number for it. We do have a specific amount, and it's significant enough to cover this type of thing. It's a pretty standard provision.
Yeah, the million-dollar requirement, where did that number come from?
We deal through our risk management, city's risk management.
I mean, the figure, because sometimes we can place unnecessary barriers to entry, and that's one of the, you know, means of putting these high insurance amounts on small businesses that can prevent others from entering the market.
Well, we can certainly take a look at that. It's, I would say, it's the same figure we put on, for example, when we have someone host an event downtown, they do a special event, it's the same insurance provision. Costs a few hundred dollars, I believe, for the policies, but we can certainly get you all the details on that. But I don't think the cost to an operator is excessive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, there's no additional speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
These items are adopted, seven zero. City Manager's Report, 16-25, adoption of an ordinance to accept and appropriate 111, excuse me, $115,184.73. How about I say that number over again?
Very good.
Received via the Circuit and General District Courts and the FY 2015-16 General Fund for use by the Sheriff's Office for excess equipment and other items needed to support the Sheriff's Office Training Academy. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Okay. Let me, first of all, let me ask the manager, this equipment that we'll be authorizing the funding for, this is all mobile? In other words, we're in the process of reviewing all of these leases, and we're going to be moving the academy as well as some of the other things? This would not prohibit that, would it? Or would it not? Madam Manager?
Mayor, this would not prohibit that.
Okay, all right, very good.
Please, for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted, seven zero. 16-26, adoption of an ordinance to amend Article III of Chapter II of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to add there to a new section, 2-117, pertaining to state and national background checks for certain designated city employees and volunteers. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have a speaker,
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. A summary of item number 1626 says that the Human Resource Management Department wants to create a central criminal background check policy for its city employees and its volunteers, as well as controlling the process of criminal background checks. It is reported that their criminal background policy will not impact the background check process for the fire police, and their budget is able to absorb the costs of conducting criminal background checks. Did the HR director talk with the Chief of Police about their anticipated need? What kind of government do we, the people, have in our city? I need an appointment to talk with the Chief of Police about this issue. Next, you mean to tell me that HR department has sufficient funding in their budget to absorb the costs of conducting criminal background checks? Where did they get the money for this? Ms. Whitson, I'm making a FOIA request to get a copy of the budget of the HR department and have it pointed out where the money came from to promote this resolution. Something is not right with this department. Mr. Auditor, this department needs an audit. The four political elites cut our department of public safety, yet HR can absorb the cost of conducting criminal background checks? We have a budget deficit of $20 million and a hiring freeze in force. No, we, the people, do not need this duplication of services. I do not give my consent to item number 1626. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no additional speakers on this item?
Please, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 16-27, adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 32-23 and adopting a new Article 10, including Sections 32-275 through 32-288, and pertaining to food trucks. Vision principle, neighborhoods and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Please, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 16-28, adoption of a resolution in support of a rail enhancement fund application for the Commonwealth Railway Expansion Project. Vision principles, a robust economy for working men and women, and efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. New Business, 16-29, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Mayor and members of the council, I offer for your consideration and move the adoption of the following appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Americas with Disabilities Commission, Dr. Jaclyn Walker. Board of Building Code Appeals, Gina Thompson. Board of Zoning Appeals, Joanne Carter and Mary Maury. Community Policy and Management Team, Community Criminal Justice Board, Elaine Brethway. Downtown Desert Nate Committee, Don Richardson. Historic Preservation Commission, Timothy Beach. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Billy Montgomery Cook. And Parks and Recreation Commission, Laura Armstrong.
All right, thank you. Second.
Second.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk?
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. These items are adopted seven zero. Sixteen dash thirty, items submitted by council members. Item A, a resolution adopting the city council's newly revised vision principles for fut- for the future of the City of Portsmouth. Electronic roll call, and we have speakers.
Okay. Yeah, what we're going to do is, we're going to allow speakers to come up and speak on this item, but as we discussed in the work session, we're going to defer to vote on this item until next meeting. But we knew we had folks that came and wanted to speak on it, and it probably is good for us to hear your comments and take them in account next meeting when we vote. So with that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
My name is Rebecca Laris and I live here in Portsmouth at four two one Middle Street. Good evening, everyone. I have some good news. We have a unique historic area in our town that generated over one point five million dollars in tax revenue in two thousand and fourteen. The properties in this location were assessed at a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, and it's alongside the city's largest historical tourist attractions. Those areas generated close to eight point five million dollars in XX taxes last year. If perhaps you don't know, it holds the largest collection of original period homes located between Alexandria, Virginia, and Charleston, South Carolina. It's a historic district of the caliber coveted by every seaside in Port City on America's east coast. It's Old Town, of course, and it belongs to Portsmouth. Even more good news, we've been taking great care of it, and as you consider the pride of past vision principle, please understand that because of our pride of the past, Old Town property owners have been preserving their homes in accordance with the city's well-written historic guidelines. It can be financially challenging, but it's been paying off, and we've seen our property values sustained. But now, we need your help. We know that the upcoming Master Utility Project reconstruction methods, if not implemented in a historically appropriate manner, could negatively impact our property values and the city's tax base. As the council discusses the complicated issues of visions and of work being performed in Old Town, we ask you to consider all of the factors that contribute to the historical significance of our neighborhood. The green streets, the brick sidewalks, the granite and slate curbs, the stone aggregate streets, and the large trees, all significantly add to the property values in Old Town. They're what drives the many tourists and visitors to come to Portsmouth and walk our streets and see our history and spend their money right here. We want to share our history and increase the almost two hundred million dollars spent in Portsmouth last year. As evidence of how important our history is to the residents, we've taken it upon ourselves to help maintain, financially and otherwise, our city parks, green spaces, and natural areas in Old Town, since city funding for this maintenance has been cut back over the years. Old Town residents spend a lot of time and effort to keep their properties up to a valuable, marketable, historic, and aesthetic standard. After all, tourists don't want to come to visit mediocrity. Portsmouth is history, and history matters.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is it possible to hand these out?
Sure, you can just give them to Sergeant Anon.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Revel and I reside at four twenty-two Crawford Street. History, Portsmouth has four hundred years of it right here, all the way back to colonial times. As a major maritime center, as a major maritime center and part of a region steeped in history, we are uniquely attractive to tourists. And tourism is big business, bringing in over eight million dollars in tax revenue last year. But unlike other southern cities who have embraced their past to improve on their future, Portsmouth seems to be taking another path. Recently, there has been concerted effort to hide the Confederate monument from public view. Additionally, until this evening, pride of past from our Vision twenty thirty vision principles was scheduled for consideration. Could these actions be connected? Is the new Portsmouth that I hear so much about one which dismisses history and the valuable lessons it teaches and shifts our focus away from history and an economic, valuable economic engine for Portsmouth? Just think about how history can fuel our economy. First, there is money spent by tourists attracted to our history, money for lodging, meals, business in local shops, a significant source of tax revenue. Then, there are the jobs, jobs that bring people to our town to eat, shop, play, and live here, creating even more tax revenue. But no one wants to visit or live in a place that has lost its soul. And when you look at all the empty storefronts in our downtown area, you have to wonder, are we losing our soul? Where is the vision? Can we afford to ignore our history? Are you aware that the DDC has not met for three months? This means that no one is looking to Portsmouth for new business in that time period. I personally know of one restaurant owner that considered Portsmouth, but ultimately settled in Norfolk, and another that already decided on Portsmouth, but now has cold feet because of all the negative public discussions about hiding one controversial period of our four hundred year history. These two examples alone mean over two million dollars in lost investment, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. We simply cannot afford this. Mayor Hawley often spoke of the Portsmouth family. Well, like any family, Portsmouth has had our share of triumph and tragedy, but it's all recorded in our history. I would ask council not to try to build a future by ignoring the past or by whitewashing the parts of history that make us uncomfortable. Please, vote to retain pride of past in our Vision twenty thirty principles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Honorable Mayor and Honorable Counsel, Madam City Manager, staff, fellow citizens. My name's Thomas Butt and I live at two fourteen Glasgow Street. I'm here tonight to implore you to include pride of past in the vision principle statement. You postponed your vote tonight till the next meeting, I understand. We are all so fortunate to live in a city that boasts so many natural and man-made resources with a rich history that are ranked top tier nationally. It is our duty to express pride and exploit these treasures to the benefit of our entire city. Not everyone is a history enthusiast like many of us, and that's okay. Tonight, though, this council's wisdom and continued support, with that continued support, all citizens of Portsmouth can benefit financially. By recognizing and upholding the historic vision this city chose in the late nineteen forties, we are protecting the economic and social fabric of Portsmouth for future generations to enjoy while expanding our tax base. People want to see where the first English settlers came and explored. They plied these very waters outside this building and surely were amazed at its bounty. They were impressed to the point of naming our river in honor of their queen. And why did Andrew Sproul choose this spot for his Gosport Shipyard? And when our forces routed the British at Cranny Island, didn't they and the entire world see then how we had established our place in history? Do sailors from around the world know where milepost number one is? Yes, they do. And they also know where the first dry dock was built right here next to this building in the shipyard. And aren't the colored community library museum and the Jewish cultural center honored and dear examples of our history? I've been to Iowa and seen the largest corn cob. I've been to Nebraska and seen the largest ball of iron. Tennessee, the big chicken. We don't have that here. We've got the real deal. Our beloved city has witnessed so many notable events, and we can be proud or humble, as the case may be, but we should never deny our historic personality. It's the jewel of our crown. These resources cannot be duplicated elsewhere, and no doubt we are the envy of many U.S. cities who can't make these claims. So let's celebrate our history, promote it as the economic engine it really is, and to continue it, to share it with our neighbors, near and far. In summary, I'm here to remind this council and all my fellow citizens how very lucky we are to live with such rich historic attributes. I urge you to recognize this very special economic engine that is key to our quality of life and future. We are all charged with the very high responsibility of protecting these gifts as our predecessors have asked. Allow us to continue to work together, government and citizens, to promote the good fortune and goodwill our historical footprint represents.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. Thank you. Let me just, before we get to the next speaker, this is, this is a prime example, and you can state it if you like, of politics at its absolute worst. This is an exercise that we are looking at reviewing our principles. We had staff to make recommendations like we do on everything else, and because we being open and put that out publicly, someone thought it was a good political stunt to go out and rile up half of our community because someone up here wants to remove terminology that says we're hiding or, or, or not pleased with our history. No one up here, everyone up here agrees with what you're saying and probably everyone else, but because of bad politics, and we're in that season, okay, there was a television station that did a piece on it, and no one up here asked that. And none of that stuff's going to be removed. Y'all can continue to come up and speak, but again, we're in that season, sir, and the people that mislead you and have you all come riled up talking and saying these types of things is just very unfortunate, but that's where we are. So I agree with your comments, I agree with Kathy's comments. I don't think anybody up here wants to do what you're saying here, but someone has made this an issue, and because we've got a network that will put anything on television. And keep in mind, this is one of the issues with the whole openness piece. All of this stuff is put out so everybody can see the recommendations that the staff give us, but we ultimately vote. And if you notice, our staff makes recommendations with us on planning, PRHA, and all these other things, but until we vote, it's not finalized. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Butt.
Thank you, Mayor. And by the way, there's nothing political about me coming here. I wrote this paper because of the publication from the city.
I understand. Well, and, and some, there's some other issues behind it that are driving forces, and so, and it wasn't to imply that you were up here behind politics.
No, no, of course not. And I am encouraged by your remarks and the fact that you put it back in the document in the work session elated us also. We were greatly relieved. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, very good. Have a good night. Madam Clerk?
My name is David Ratcliffe. I'm a lifelong resident of Portsmouth. I live at four twenty-two Crawford Street. I'll be very brief so that others may speak. A few observations. I think recent job performance from some council members and some city people has really been poor. I think another observation is a lot of citizens are upset with how, how things have been going. I take exception to the point that the mayor was just making. There was a handout made at the work session, January twelfth of two thousand and sixteen. This is the handout the city gave. The vision principle of which we're speaking is nowhere on it. It disappeared. And apparently, there's been some magic happen this evening at the work session. It's reappeared. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Dr. Randolph Booth Farr, and I'd like to preface something before I say what I'm going to say. My esteemed colleagues have mentioned about the history and what have you, but I am a retired history professor from a college, a local college, and I own an one hundred and sixteen year old Victorian house in Parkview. And I, I'll thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for saying that what you said in terms of what the plans are for reviewing this issue. But I would like to go ahead and say what I'm, of course, planning to say.
Please.
Basically, I'm here to speak on the half of people from Portsmouth and to make comments on the proposed changes to the vision statement. We feel that the vision statement should reflect the pride of the past while including our military history. Portsmouth, of course, is one of the largest cities with surviving collection of historic homes, as has already been said. I won't say that it's between Alexandria and Charleston has already been said that. But what I would like to say is that Portsmouth is listed on the, on the National Historic Registry of Historic Homes, and we have five historical districts in the city. Old Town is one, Port Norfolk, Craddock, Truxton, and Parkview, in which I live. We also have, have historic churches, Underground Railroad, buildings, cemeteries, and museums which need to be addressed. To include just the military history and exclude historical aspects of our city does an injustice to who we are. Without acknowledging our past, we stunt our growth in the future. I'd like to conclude by saying great cities are like tapestries. Their history, their character and individuality are the fabrics from which we are woven. We, meaning all of us in Portsmouth. Portsmouth buildings and urban port settings provide a wonderful sense of place. Their beauty, their scale inspire, inspire to connect us to our past while helping us to shape our future. Marketing our history maintains a balance between our role as one of America's most important architectural resources and a real living city with a great quality of life for all residents. We request that you do not exclude our pride of the past in your vision statement, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well done.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Barry Randall, the Brighton section of Portsmouth. Many of you all know my passion, which is the safety of the citizens of our city. By the way, Mr. Meeks, thank you for speaking up about what you did on the news the other day. But I want to bring your attention to the part where it says the enhanced quality of life. This is a different direction from what everybody else is talking about, where it started out with Portsmouth is committed to remaining a safe city where our residents, and, you know, we'll just stop right there. It's interesting, Dr. Patton, that you all would scratch that part out of the cit- out of the, the vision. Why would any of you all that are on council want to live in a city that's not safe? Also, I want to bring to the public's attention, you know, because my friend Mark the dog Yastrowski told me that the vision statement is a consensus of those on council. We've been complaining about the crime in our city and the crime in our city, and I noticed you all, I don't know how you was able to manage to get the Chief of Police to do it, but he came up here during that photo shoot, I'm sorry, that press conference that, that you put together and said that we are safer today than we were in two thousand and eight. People don't even remember where their car keys at, nevertheless, two thousand and eight. And for you all to concede that Portsmouth isn't a safe city really boggles my mind because you tell the media, when you do talk to the media, one thing, that is not the lack of public safety funding, it's not this, it's not that, you know, but I guess you want to take that little part out because you all recognize that, you know, we're not as safe as we proclaim to be. So if you're going to- So if you're going to build with economic development and all of these wonderful things that we talk about how to make our city great, how are you going to do that when you all are conceding that our city is not a safe place to live or even do business? We just had last night two people shot and show up at Merview Hospital. Thank God they did not die. But I guess instead of you all taking the task of making sure that, hey, you know, we can't stop crime, but we can at least curb crime. So what we'll do is, since we're trying to erase history, we'll also throw some truth in there because the reality of the matter is all of us have a conscience. And regardless of the politics that some of you all are up there playing and that agenda that you all have, you really know that our city isn't safe. So here's, here's a vision that I think you all should really write, and this will be some truth. Citizens of Portsmouth, we are the majority. We're going to tear down that monument whether you like it or not, and we're never wrong is always the media's fault.[660.51][660.51](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Tony Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, city manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tony Goodwin and of course, I live in the Parkview section of the city. And I did come in to, tonight to speak about the, the removal of pride of past from our vision principles, which I commend you for doing what is right to take that back and look at it again. And have been a sponsor, supporter of history in this city. As you know, we've had some times where we've had some discussion that either becomes heated to a certain degree, but to preserve this past is crucial. It really goes to say, and we've got firsts all over our city, first dry dock, first planned shopping center in, in the world. We've got world famous barbecue that's come out of the city. We've got athletes, we've got entertainers. That's part of what "we" we are, and I don't have a mouse in my pocket either. I'm talking about "we" as a collective of this city, and we should be proud of that and take that and be part of our foundation because we're constantly building on a foundation. There's something to say for a house that's built on, on sand. It obviously is a shifting moment and the, the house will eventually fall down. But we have a strong, strong foundation and we, if we build upon that and maintain that foundation, we will propel into the future for many, many years to come and, and just embrace that as what we are. We are history, we are Portsmouth. And I pride you, proud you to, to continue on with that, that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 19, only limited and carefully defined powers shall be delegated to government, all others being retained in the people. We the people have delegated to the elected defined powers in our city's charter, the Virginia Constitution, and the United States Constitution. That's it. Therefore, I oppose the change in the vision statement done by the city manager without the consent of the people. The defined powers for the city manager is in the chapter five, and it states that the city manager shall be responsible to the city council for the efficient and professional administration of all affairs of the city. The manager shall have power and duty to see that all laws and ordinances are enforced. The charter does not give the city manager authority to change the vision statement. The power to change the vision statement is retained in the people, not the city manager. In our Virginia Constitution, in Article One, Section Two, people, the source of power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, the public, civil officers, are their trustees and servants and at all times amendable to them. I haven't seen anyone elected being a trustee and a servant and are amendable to us. They vote any way they want, no matter what our conscience states. So, do I trust anyone to change the vision statement at this time in our history? I don't trust anyone elected to follow any rule of law. What we the people have seen lately from our trustees and civil servants is destructive and malicious behavior such as failing to yield to an authority request to stop, eluding the police, holding inappropriate closed sessions, finding a councilman for freedom of speech, failing to accept responsibility for inappropriate behavior, failing to represent the citizens instead, instead sticking together with the council so it won't look bad to the public, failing to give a damn about the election, failing to build houses at the old Craddock High School site, failing to take care of financial business and yet be elected to city council. City council elected are purposely creating economic disparity, social chaos, and racial war out of a desire for centralized power and a disturbed sense of superiority. God save Portsmouth. God save our Commonwealth. Thanks for listening.[946.23][946.23](APPLAUSE).
Good evening again.
Good evening, sir.
I'm going to take a different tack from previous speakers, although I agree in particular with Bishop Randall's statement about the need for public safety to be properly identified in any vision principle. It's appropriate that the person who was one of the midwives delivering this baby almost 10 years ago is now on hand as it steps into its first decade. Dr. Patton helped to corral the council that was here at that time and make them put on their thinking caps and, and verbalize principles because there never had been any documented vision principles for the city prior to that point. But I think that at this juncture, this could be a community building exercise if, like the budget discussions that are coming up next weekend and into the following week, we called the city together to formulate a vision. And it's an opportunity for us to heal as a city because it gives us the chance to talk about what holds us together, the principles that make us all neighbors. As Dr. King said, it doesn't matter what ship you came over on initially, we're all in the same boat now. And that's what I want to see from Portsmouth. That's why I stood here with the mayor and other community leaders a couple of weeks ago, because we are a great city. The greatness is our people, the good-hearted people who make up the vast majority of my fellow residents here. I think this could help us move in a direction that would be positive and constructive for the city of Portsmouth if we do it together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well done.[1125.23][1125.23](APPLAUSE). Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to provide a little perspective to this vision statement. There are actually only four people in this room, I believe, maybe five, that were part of this original vision statement. That would be Mr. Godoguyutrowski, who was there as a citizen, Dr. Patton, who was there as a deputy city manager, Councilman Moody, and me. And maybe Mr. Baldwin was there. We had a city council retreat at Camp Silver Beach on the eastern shore, and we spent two and a half days crafting that vision statement that has had a little tweaking over the years since that time. But the original statements were really heartfelt. I put a pretty long post on Facebook and said, you know, I could point to every sentence in that statement and say, that was Mr. Moody's thought, that was Mr. Heretic's thought, that was Ms. Randall's thought, that was Ms., Dr. Holly's thought. So what's happened now is no malicious intent to leave out history or leave out public safety or children or education. It's that we haven't had a retreat. When it was time to have a retreat in the fall, we didn't have a permanent manager. We didn't have 11 department heads. And so I think the mayor frankly made the right call in saying, let's hold off and not have a retreat till we have a staff onboard. But it's time to think of and talk about the vision. So Dr. Patton and her staff brought us something, and so now we're talking about it. And I don't think anybody's trying to throw anybody under the bus. It's what they brought us to talk about, and look what's happening. We're talking about it. And I think that's a great thing, and I think Mr. Godoguyutrowski's right. We put the brakes on tonight, you know, several of us have brought in different things, and sometimes you read something 25 times and you don't even realize what's missing. The first time I read it, I was like, wow, he's talking about military and we don't even have anything in there about the Navy? You know, all we had was the Coast Guard. Well, it was present malicious, it was just an oversight. So we'll get through this. There's no clock ticking, there's no bell going to go off if we don't do it in two weeks. We'll do it two weeks after that. We, we got plenty of time to get it right, is my point. So thank you, and that's why we wanted to hear from you tonight.
Very good. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. There are no additional speakers on this item.
Okay. So again, we will address this at the next meeting, and we appreciate all of your comments and your inputs, and if you have more, please send them in by email, or you can call like you do, or however you want to do it. We really are dead serious about this engagement piece, okay? Some of us only want to come when we think the place is on fire, but we should be in attendance like this at every meeting about every subject matter that we discuss. Mr. Mark mentioned we're all in the same boat, and we are. And if we use this, and we use this time to discuss and understand each other, I think we'll all be in a better place when we make these types of decisions. So thank you again. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the non-agenda piece?
Well, just before we do that, we need a motion to defer this item.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Seven, seven. We have a motion, I'm sorry. Dr. Whitaker?
No, no, that's, that's next.
We have a motion and a second to defer this to your next meeting, which is on February This item is deferred 7-0.
Very good. All right, now we're in the items submitted by council. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. It is, it has come to our attention that there is a Senate Bill 702, which would have a significant financial impact on the city of Portsmouth in regards to the taxing of the south, the Jordan Bridge. And so we are asking for a consensus of council to direct our mayor to send a letter to the patron of the bill, Senator Louise Lucas, requesting that she would strike Senate Bill 702 so that it would not have the financial impact on Portsmouth that it is foreseen to.
Okay.
And so do we have a consensus from council?
Is there a consensus? Okay. All right, so noted, and I'll get it done. Thank you. All right, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to remind people, we have these three budget events coming up. The first one is this Saturday at Wilson High School from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning, then Thursday, February 4th, at I.C. Norcom from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening, and then again, the following Saturday, February 6th, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Churchland High School. And it's going to be kind of neat, it's going to be very interactive with some...
Clickers.
We call them clickers, a little handheld computer device that will allow you to be sitting in the audience and answer questions that you will immediately see the answers on the screen, what you think about questions that will be asked about the budget. If you look at the replay of tonight's work session, you'll see kind of how that worked and how they showed it to us. So that's Saturday, this Saturday, the 30th, 9:00 to 11:00 at Wilson High School is the next one. So please attend.
Very good. Also, don't forget the rescheduling. We have the presentations of our police chief finalists. We were scheduled to have that last weekend, but because of the snow event, we cancel all of those activities, and that's also going to be Saturday. What time is that one?
1:00.
At 1:00.
I.C. Norcom.
At I.C. Norcom High School. So 1:00, I.C. Norcom High School, we'll have our final candidates, our finalists for the police chief. They're going to make 10, 15-minute presentations, and then we'll have some dialogue. So please, all be in attendance. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just want to take a personal privilege and recognize the presence of, of my, my little girl, Felicia Adele Cherry.
Is that your baby?
My baby.
Okay.
She's a 23-year-old baby, but she's still my baby.
Welcome. Glad you're here. Okay, with that, before we go to the next issue, I want to thank the Boy Scouts PAC 207. I had a great opportunity last night to meet them at the resurrection over on Cedar Road and Cedar Lane, and I had a very interesting dialogue. You know, as Boy Scouts, that's part of their mission to understand government and different leaders, and we talked about national, state, and local government. Had a lot of great questions, had a lot of conversation about energy. These are Boy Scouts PAC 207. I actually got into a little dialogue about SIPSA and Willa Brader and the whole energy piece, and a couple of the Boy Scouts talked about solar energy. I'm telling you, I'm so impressed with our young people as we go out and, and do these types of things, and just like we did tonight in recognizing these kids at Wilson High School that went out and made us proud at the, not the Gator Bowl, what was it? Yeah, Gator Bowl, right, at the Gator Bowl. So to Boy Scout PAC 207, I told them I'd put a plug in for, oh, the Taxpayers Bowl, okay, yeah, corporate sponsors. I told them I'd put on a plug in for them because they were such great kids, but this weekend, they're having the Pine Derby, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Pine Derby, but that is a huge deal in the Boy Scouts. And I think this weekend, it's, it's all day Saturday, I believe. Someone raised their hand back there, so you, you familiar with that? So anyway, go PAC 207, and I told them if they come to a council meeting, we'll allow them to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance and, oh, that was another good question. One kid, I think he was a Weeblo, and he asked what was, what did that flag mean and its purpose? And he set me up for 20-minute answer, and they were asleep when I got done. But anyway, so go PAC 207. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 16-31, report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Very good.
16-32, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, city manager, city attorney, Devin Whiting, capable staff, good evening. My name is Joseph R. Wright, Cavalier Manor. My topic tonight is crime in Portsmouth. In my humble opinion, there are two types of crimes that are non-preventable. They are homicides and suicides. But we can slow homicides down with a combination of twos, as well as other crimes. Number one, apply for another IDEA grant. And if you want to know what that means, I only have three minutes, so I'll, if you have any questions, let me know. Number two, ask for state police assistance. We've done that before. Number three, more citizen environment. Number four, reactivate the sheriff's task force. Number five, increase the police force with retirees, police retirees who are willing to come back and help, especially with these homicides. Number six, more visi, more visibility from our uniform patrol. We had one chief that would not let his uniform patrol go up on the interstate unless it was a emergency. If they had to go from one place to the other, he recommended going through the neighborhood so they can be seen. Number seven, monthly meetings with the police chief and civil leads, leaders, and neighborhood watch leaders. Since I got some time left, IDEA grant... Since I got some time left, IDEA grant. That was a three-year grant that we received some years ago. And it was so successful, we got an award from the governor, Governor Wallow. And the, all the bad guys were leaving Portsmouth, going to other cities. That's how effective these, this grant was. And if it's in a way possible, I'd sure like to see that happen again. And as far as community policing, we already have that council meets. We don't have them all at one precinct. We don't have one at each precinct. But we got at least one in each neighborhood. Cavalier Manor had three. Now we're down to one. I really don't believe the numbers that we don't need in the police. We need police. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, let me, if you would, let me, first of all, let me thank you for coming up. And I just left our U.S. Conference of Mayors last week. I left Tuesday night, actually Wednesday morning after the community meeting. And over 400 mayors were there. And the topic, the dominant topic of discussion was crime.
Right.
Okay? This is throughout our country. The uptick and how we as a society handle that. And we had a real huge discussion, and it was led by the mayor of Baltimore, the mayor of New Orleans, the mayor of Chicago.
Those are our crime areas.
Well, exactly right. And we also had a couple of chiefs there, but the police chief of St. Louis was there. And they all talked about those things. And I gotta tell you, and I mentioned this last year when I came back, and we met with the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. A lot of the things that they discuss that cities and communities should be doing, we're doing a lot of those things.
Yeah.
You just made, mentioned to the community policing piece. We should take great pride in a lot of the progress that we've made, but we need to make sure we understand the whole picture. Because even though we're doing a lot of the 21st century community policing, doing some different things, whether they're on horseback, whether they're walking in the street, there's the other components with the citizens' engagement piece, people getting involved, people trusting the authority, as well as after-school programs, as well as recreation community centers. All of those things were brought up. I mean, it made me look at some of our demographics and some of the things that we have been doing great. I mean, we just, not a year ago, at the PCR banquet that you had, we talked about the great things that were going on in the city, right? Things might have kinda turned and went south right after that banquet.
Yes, indeed.
So you might not want to have that banquet this year, but, uh...
It's already in the making.
It's already in the making. The point is, though, we need to be very careful that we don't throw out and allow times like this for people to stand up and either score political points or make silly statements that make it seem like there's nothing going on or there's nothing working. What we have works, but we need to make sure we focus on all of it. Because if you're not working and helping these young people, I mean, right now, between ages 16 and 24-years-old in Portsmouth, 50% of those young people are out of work, okay? Between 16-years-old and 24, 50% in Portsmouth are out of work. And the reason I looked at that number is because that was the crux of the discussion amongst the mayors and programs with, which we're talking with the manager and others about how do we do something in way of after-school programs? How do we do something with summer jobs and all of those types of initiatives? She mentioned the, the, the Meniscus Scholar that she just introduced the other day, which I thought was great. But we've got to get back to more of those types of things, and we are not using this as an opportunity to get more police or get more staff. We've got to look at the whole envelope and look at it in its totality. Because a lot of things we're doing are great things. We, and we need to always make sure that we're critical on ourselves and we do things and ask questions. I think when Dr. Whitaker first came on board, there was discussion up here by a couple of members of why is he asking so many questions? I think that's healthy. And we should be wanting to defend what we're doing and allow people to ask questions. And if there are areas that we need to improve, that's what we should be doing. So to one minute criticize someone for asking questions, then the next minute, when something happens, and all of these cities are being stressed right now. And it's been done, sir, because of our, our society. And it's a combination of things. Parenting, I mean, we talk about that all the time. We talk about places for kids to go, all of those types of things. And so we as a city have to be able to focus on those things, but we can exclude education. I mean, I mentioned at the community meeting, since 2009, $1 billion has been removed from the Commonwealth of Virginia, the education fund, $1 billion. That's a lot of money for our legislators to be taking out of school budgets and reprogramming other areas. And so when you have those type of dynamics, you can have all of the great police, you can have all the great parents. If we're not working in sync with all of those things, something's gonna rear its ugly head and it behooves us to be able to get our arms around it. And so I was thinking up at the mayor's conference about the PCR banquet, the comments I made, the comments you made, and I think Congressman Bobby Scott made. And he talked about the great things that we were doing here. So I just want to make sure citizens are, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. There are a lot of great things we're doing. We're far from perfect. We've got to make sure that we focus on those other areas so it all comes together. So thank you for, for your comments there and your seven points. I liked six of them, by the way. All right? Good night, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I was looking for an email that I received, but I would like for it to be known that on Monday, the 1st, there is a special forum that's being held at Old Dominion University. And there are leaders that are coming from across the country who are working with community engagement pieces to fight violence and crime. I will be meeting with a Dr. Sumter. I will be meeting with representatives that will be there from Ferguson, out of St. Louis. And then I will be meeting with someone who is head of a national association, organization, a Dr. Carlisle, and I don't want to misrepresent his last name. I think Dr. Whitaker could help me, who is Holder.
Dr. Carlisle Holder.
A, a Mr. Carlisle Holder, who is working with communities across this country, addressing the issues of which we are facing. So we are looking for not just to Band-Aid something, but to look and have our criminologists and our sociologists, who are experts and working with communities across the United States, to meet with us and help us to develop our plan. So that meeting is Monday, and from there, we will continue the engagement with their leadership. And four of these persons are experts through Old Dominion University and Hampton University, who have indicated that they want to work with us. And I thank Dr. Whitaker for making the connections for me to be a part of meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings me to my last point before we get on. The police chief at St. Louis, and he talked, and he was a white gentleman. And he talked about how important it is to have a diverse police force. And he went on about, maybe about 15 minutes, about diversity, your hiring practices, all of those things, and how those things make a huge difference. And then on the other side of that, the mayor of New Orleans came in and said that works sometimes. Because New Orleans, because of that culture of corruption, if you will, has a police force that's predominantly black, and they're still having some of those same issues. So it was great to have that discussion because we all understand how important diversity is. And one of the things that we've been trying to get our arms wrapped around here with the hiring practices with our police and fire and making sure we've got diversity so we have people that look like the community, that are policing the community. So all of those things are, are, are components that we should be all weighing equally and not pitting one against the other or not trying to play politics for one versus the other. Because they all should be given an equal weight. And because we have limited budgets and limited things we can do, we've got to sometime focus on one without the other and then back and forth the next time around. So again, the community engagement piece, that's why we're going out to do that, to make sure we get that type of engagement. All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Betty Ashbery.
Betty Ashbery, Churchill and Section of Portsmouth. And I don't know why it is, when I have this all written out, to what I'm gonna say when I get up here, somebody says something to change my mind. But Mayor, I don't think, I think I heard you right. Did you say we should be glad when people ask questions? Did you just say that?
Absolutely.
So why is it when we get up here and ask you questions, we don't get any answers? Why is it when the press asks you questions, they don't get any answers? Now, another answer I'd like to have, who decided to have the citizens meet at Churchill and Library last week? That was a really, really bad decision. Because you, I had people call me the next day and said they came, but they couldn't get in, so they left. But I will have to say that about that meeting. I saw more togetherness with people getting up and speaking their mind than I have seen at any meeting that we have had thus far. And I think y'all should have gotten the message that there are an awful lot of unhappy people in Portsmouth. Part of what I will get back that I was gonna say, because I heard Councilwoman Meeks, you did have a press conference, right? Really? A press conference, Danny?
I didn't have a press conference.
Okay. Well, you said that you felt that we should have a police officer for every voting precinct that we have. Is that correct? Did I catch that correct? Well, now we do have what Chief Mook initiated when he was the chief here before. He, I think he was the one that initiated the community policing. And this old lady goes back a long way, when we had police officers that walked the streets, they knew everybody in the neighborhoods. In fact, the first time I had a community officer, and when I was president of my civic league, he'd just stop by and ring the doorbell every now and then and say, is everything okay in your neighborhood? And then we were able to have the policemen park their cars in their neighborhoods, which I don't think they're able to do now. And that's a really big deterrent. And I know in the past, people have complained about seeing police cars in the 7-Elevens. But I really don't remember hearing the 7-Elevens used to be robbed as frequently as they are I had one other question, too, that if you all will allow Mr. Moody to ask without, answered it without fining him. You ask a question, Bill, I think, and I will call you Bill, okay? Is that all right? I'm not being disrespectful? Okay? You ask a question last week at the city council meeting about monies that was owed for certain properties, for the cleaning up on those properties, and for taxes on those properties. Am I correct? Did you ever get an answer? Are you allowed to answer that?
Yes, I can answer. No.
Then that's all I have to say. But if you want questions asked, then for heaven's sakes, answer them when we ask them.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott Horn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I came to speak tonight about Senate Bill 697. Back in November, I sent an email to Louise Lucas's office about lowering the toll rates for motorcycles because there is a, throughout the state, slight motorcycles, one toll only place charges motorcycle same as cars, others charge it differently. She wrote a bill for me, and the bill states, and to amend sec, amend, uh, get to the top, amend code 33.2-613, states, "Any motorcycle operated by the holder of a valid driver's license issued by the Commonwealth or any other state shall be allowed free usage of all toll bridges, toll roads, and other toll facilities in the Commonwealth." There's a reason Senator Lucas did this and wrote it as free and not as a quarter of the fee of an automobile, as I asked. And that reason is she can seize, she sees that that can bring economic growth back to the city of Portsmouth. Because the average motorcycle rider is over the age of 40 and makes over $75,000 a year. And we like to spend our money at places that enjoy having us. So her thought on it was, if it's free, she can get people back into Portsmouth spending money. But there's a new issue now. On Monday, the 1st, it looks like it's going to be pushed aside by the tolling subcommittee. Tolling Subcommittee is made up of, uh, I had it here. Cosgrove, Distep, Marston, and Alexander. Alexander is from Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach. Those three senators are against it. They're saying that the reason for this is motorcyclists just want to get a free ride. It's not. It didn't start out as that, and it's not that. It started out as motorcycles, motorcyclists getting a, paying a fair amount for their size. Senator Lucas changed it to, let's get more people into Portsmouth spending money. What saddens me is I've been going down this road since November, and I have not gotten any support from you, the council. And that's what we need now. I need the support, Virginia Coalition of Motorcycles. Senator Lucas needs your support getting this passed so we can bring people back to Portsmouth spending money.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I think those are issues that this council needs to offer support to our senator in the form of a resolution supporting that legislation. And, you know, if that could be written, if there's consensus with my colleagues, I would like to see us do that. That can only stand to benefit the city of Portsmouth. And I think it's a small thing to ask.
Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't know if we've got a tiny resolution, but, but you're going up there tomorrow, right?
I'll be up there tomorrow and Thursday.
So you can speak to, to the senator and to the other ones that you run into. I'm sure Mr. Alexander will talk to you and express our, our concern about the support and support for that.
I will do so. I got the action.
And a couple of others, I don't know when that bill's been heard, we'll probably be going up there next week, and we can do the same when we get up, when we go up there.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. I can talk to Bill Distep. I'll give him a call and see what's the reason of denying it. My brother-in-law works for him, so I'll do that.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Randy Bailey.
Oh, yes. Here we are again. Last time, we were out in the vestibule. We had a discussion about jobs and a few other things. And what I didn't tell you is that I had spoken with an individual I know in the Department of Labor, and we'd gotten together with some people in SCORE. And I was trying to set up a pilot program. And it was in process of being going somewhat well, until one of them read something on social media where the Portsmouth mayor took a stance on crime by going out and committing three. And they kind of come back and said, no, not at this time. We're gonna wait until things settle down and things get resolved. So I'm going to continue to work on that, but you need to kind of work on the image. I have to say that what was said about running away from the sheriff in a lit parking garage because you feared for your life and whatever, I don't know the truth in that, but, you know, we need to work on the image. I've talked to several young people who said that, you know, you coming out smiling in the, in the mugshot and coming out of court smiling... the mugshot and coming out of court smiling tells them that doing what you did was okay. I don't think that's the message we wanna send to the kids, you know? There's been a poll. Fifty-six percent of the people feel that what you did was wrong. Seventeen percent, they just kinda agree with what happened, and the rest of the people just really didn't have an opinion. Ninety-eight percent of the people feel that what was done to Moody was egregious and wrong. The other, and this evening, there was a poll where 65% of the people agree with Moody, I mean Meeks, and his program with putting police officers out into the precincts. Now, back when I was a kid, we called them flatfoot. And the one I was dealt with was an old 55-year-old Irish cop that had a nightstick about this long, and he could twirl it and bounce it on the ground. And when I turned 18, I went out and got drunk and decided I could tell him what he did with that stick. Well, he handed me the stick and took it away from me and proceeded to beat my butt, carried me home and dropped me on a doorstep. And the next morning, I had to look at my two uncles, the county sheriff and the magistrate, and my grandfather, the admiral, and my father, the captain, while they explained to me what was wrong. So somewhere along the line, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Good night, sir.
We need to do things different.
Good night, Mr. Bailey. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Steve Carroll.
Welcome to the new Portsmouth. A school board whose fiscal conduct was so shady it compelled a 2012 grand jury investigation where council and the school board were severely chastised. A council member exposed by Channel 13 News on November 13th, 2015, for owing over $200,000 in unpaid taxes, some of which went unpaid over five years. Councilman Edmonds, your scrutiny of commission candidates ought to extend to your fellow council members. A fortune wasted on minority contracting studies when the Portsmouth WMB concept is clearly fraught with waste and inefficiency. A homicide rate and robbery rate on track respectively to exceed 230% over the last year. Unseemly interaction by council members with police, with the police chief. No comment orders issued to city employees. Unseemly council closed sessions with vindictive fines. The mass exodus of dozens of experienced department heads. Our mayor's gag order on the TV broadcast of non-agenda speaker comments, and now the reduction of speaking time from five to three minutes. A monstrous debt of $576 million. In spite of this massive debt, the mayor and his buddies concocted a plan to convert the former pineside into an immensely expensive rec center. Our mayor's vehicle inspection, seven months in arrears. Our mayor allegedly refusing to submit to law enforcement orders and has been charged with a felony. No apology to citizens. What an example to teenagers. How flattering to Portsmouth, just like your grin right now. The cowardly, capricious firings, the cowardly, capricious firings of the most respected city manager and city attorney in Hampton Roads. In my opinion, both were fired not because they failed to do their job, but rather because they were doing their jobs honestly and conscientiously. In my opinion, the former city manager was fired simply because he exposed the misconduct and redundant funding of the school board and the frank revelations of Portsmouth's horrendous debt and budget shortfalls. The presidential administration of Warren Harding is in the history books as the most scandalous and corrupt in U.S. history. The aforementioned makes Warren Harding look like a choir boy. And talking about programs, Mayor, this country since 1964 has spent $12 trillion on the phony war on poverty. Our current national debt is $20 trillion. Money's not the problem. It's ethics. It's principle.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Minister Edward Jones.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Council Members. My name is Edward Yeoman. I'm with Universal Life Church Ministries. I'm here before you to address a concern of a citizen born and raised in the city of Been disabled, disabled all of their lives, on Social Security disability through the Social Security Administration, as well as deemed disabled through social services. The disability of this citizen of Portsmouth is a mental disability. They did not know or understand how to file an exemption for tax, real estate tax relief. Their parents purchased a home, paid for it 30 years in the city of Portsmouth, and wanted to make sure that their child would have a safe place to live in Portsmouth. Meeting all of the standards of city, of Portsmouth ordinances to receive real estate tax relief. Because of their mental disability and no fiduciary, or no one to stand up for their rights, or know that they should file the proper paperwork annually to be exempt from real estate taxes. They assessed the city of Portsmouth $18,053 worth of real estate tax since 2006. This homeowner has, on Social Security, through the Social Security Administration, as well as the Internal Revenue, has been excluded from filing any federal or state income tax since 2004. Yet, the only way that we could ward off the homelessness of this disabled woman was to file bankruptcy, have her and help her file Chapter 13 bankruptcy, just so she could preserve her place to live. We attempted to address the issue with someone in the Treasury Department. And we were told, when we mentioned, what can we work out? This woman is normally exempt from paying taxes. She meets all the standard requirements. Her mental disability made her incapable of filing the annual exemption. He said, the reply was, "What are the bidders at the auction gonna think? What are they gonna say?" I thought that was deplorable. I understand the vision of Portsmouth, I understand the vision of any city, municipality in the United States. But I don't think it should be at the cost of humanity and human dignity and decent ethics and respect. I don't know whether there's an oversight committee, someone that's set to oversee so many things that are going on in the Treasury and some of these departments, but it needs to be looked into. I have all the documentation to prove this woman's tax exemption through IRS.
Minister Jones, let me just cut you off, because your time is up. Let me ask the question. So is the status of the property now, what, being auctioned off by the Treasury because of unpaid taxes?
Correct.
Okay. And has someone like yourself, or someone assigned to help the citizen that is the homeowner that's not capable of doing this? Where is that person, or where was that person before it got to that point? Can you answer that?
Mentally disabled. Once, once the sign was placed in front of their property, they, our home is being sold, and it's gonna be sold in three or four days when we got involved. And at that short notice, we attempted to contact the Treasury Department to discuss the issue, was turned away. And basically, through some legal advice, said the only way you could probably solve this situation is to try to make some type of payment plan with the city over five years with a $733 Social Security income per month. Was very tight...
Let me ask if I could, because this could get a little in-depth. We need to talk to you offline, sir, but, and I don't know, we've got somebody that can help you with that. I don't know all of the particulars, but we need to look into that. But the Treasury has guidelines that he must follow, and everyone must follow along with those guidelines. And normally, before things get to the point of auction...
Right.
There's been quite a bit of attempt to try to recover funds, or get someone to call his office to explain what's going on, so he can work out those types of plans. And before it even gets to an auction, so I'm a little concerned about, and that's why I asked you, who was responsible for helping the citizen? Because that person or someone should've been doing that. But we've got somebody here that can take your information, and we'll see if we can't try to help you with that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Mr. Church?
You covered it, Mayor. I was just gonna let him know also that the Treasury is a constitutionally elected officer who does not report to us.
That's right.
But the city manager and her team will look into it.
Very good. Thanks.
Mr. Nelson Velez.
Over the past year, it's been a wild and woolly ride for most of us. One of the most curious and debilitating purges in the city's history was initiated. Purge began with our city manager and our city attorney during the worst time to lose such experienced leaders, such experienced people in the midst of a very difficult and challenging budget process. It wasn't, it wasn't the moving on of these officials. It was the number, the sheer number, and the timing that was the most indicting. Last year's pay increase to every department in the government was notable for who was left out. Our police, sheriff, fire department, our most essential departments in the city were left out. It's indefensible. Is this part of your war against crime? In light of how violent and dangerous our society is becoming, to show such disdain for the work of our police, sheriff, and fire departments, especially when such contempt results in real cuts to essential manpower and services. Taxes were once again raised, directly harming the heart of any city, which, as you know, are our free markets, businesses, productive citizens, our homeowners. And if that wasn't enough damage, we have the infamous gag order on those who represent us and act and speak in our name that were passed by four on this council. And as an added bonus, you decide to gag your employers, the citizens who you are supposed to represent, down to three minutes. This is a broad brush of a serious pattern of decisions that at best demonstrates poor judgment, and at worst, is a willful endangerment of this city. Many have come before you to petition their grievances, and every year, life in Portsmouth becomes ever more expensive and dangerous. You have not listened, and it seems to be not on you, but on the citizens here. Even the people that are watching TV here, it's incumbent on all of us to be involved and get engaged. I have the proud, I'm proud to be the chairman of the Portsmouth Tea Party. I support all the voices in this city. I support engagement and involvement with every citizen to get them involved. I think more people that are involved and engaged and are good citizens and come before this council, I think, means that there are less mischief and there's less damage to be inflicted on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Robert Turner.
My name's Robert Turner. I'm the president of Police and Fire Retirement Association. I think all of y'all already know me.
Yes, sir.
I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but after the work session, I felt I had to. In all respect to you, Ms. Patton, you said yourself, you got a letter telling you that you were given a supplement, and that's all you knew about it at that time. You were a retiree. Of course, now you're back as an employee. The city held numerous meetings with the retirees in one exchange to explain how they could be filing for this money. Everyone that attended left there with the understanding that it would be funded this year and the next. I don't think anybody expected it to last forever, but they did think it was good for two years, and then after that, it would be at the pleasure of the council. We had, yeah, we had retirees call one exchange just a few weeks ago, and were told it was funded fully for 2016, the money was there. But now, they've received notice that it won't be funded. Let me remind you, had we, we had no choice, did the city drop us from the plan we had. Everyone at that time paid the same premium. Now, the premiums vary according to your age. I don't understand why a city manager would take it on herself to cancel a benefit that the council had approved in the budget. This is another case of the city backstroking after we were told something. I might also add that I have tried several times to get a meeting with you, only to be told not until after the budget was done, six months after my request. I used to have an open door here, but now it's closed. Thank you for your time, but I have a PS. At no time were we told that this was a pilot program. We never, we were told one exchange was a large company that had operated in several large cities with great success, and it would save the city a great deal of money. Why you turned around and took it back away from us, we don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And you did mention that you were in the work session, and so, did you...
Several times. Because I wanted to make sure they were telling everybody the same thing.
That's right. And we'll be getting back with you. The manager has some research and data that she's gonna bring back to us, so we make sure everybody's talking off the same sheet of music. Thank you for your coming, sir. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Ursula Murphy.
Good evening, and Happy New Year, even though it's now the end of January. What I brought, what I come before you tonight is, I'd like the status on the, on a couple of items that I brought up last August, and a couple of other things that I'd like to know about. I'd like to know what happened to the nearly $900,000 worth of mulch equipment. Did we, were we able to return it? Did we get a refund of our monies? Or is this stuff gonna be sold, and how much do we expect to get? What is the status on our jail survey? Will Portsmouth be taking advantage of the state paying 50% of the cost to expand the regional jail by June 30th deadline? What's the status of the Old Craddock High School site? Will the city be taking that back? And if so, what expense to the taxpayers? The last thing, relates to two items from last city council meeting. Can you explain what the concerns are over former city retirees returning to full-time employment and the concerns of the retirement system? And lastly, what's this about the city employees and city loans? With all of the attempted distractions of the last meeting, these two items are the most disturbing to this taxpayer. Lastly, are any of these items related to the retirement or resignations of top-level management? Thank you.
Thank you, Urs. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you. I'll answer the one about Craddock. The city gave us an extension, and we're still the owner, and we're still, we're dealing with a company called Ryan Homes right now to develop it. They gotta meet with Bob Baldwin next week. Is that correct, Mr. Baldwin?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. For the homes. So that's the status, right when they get their elevations approved, infrastructure will start. So that's kinda where we're at.
Mr. Meeks, will you at least cut the grass out there? It hasn't been cut all summer. Thank you.
It's winter time. Thank you.
Still hasn't been cut.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Robert Falk.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Robert Falk. I live at 215 Depot Drive, across from the Crocus. I've heard a lot of viewpoints on the homicide rates in the city of Portsmouth, so I just wanted to come get my point of view. The grand jury process... I've heard a lot of viewpoints on the homicide rates in the city of Portsmouth, so I just wanted to come give my point of view. The grand jury process in the city of Portsmouth, in my opinion, has indicted so many black men, sent them through the courts and similar to jails and prisons, that these black men being vacuumed out the system caused a lot of black boys to be left alone. And when you leave the black boys alone, it's no one there to correct them. I heard people saying that they want more police, but a police can only get there after the homicide. A black father would be in place before the homicide, years before. So I'm thinking if you do something about the grand jury process, you can do something about the high violent crime rate that's going on. The proof, then the fact that a lot of black men are going to prison and leaving black boys alone, the proof is that when white men reach the age of 45, they start dying off faster. And the reason they're dying off quicker is because they're not getting the intervention like the black men are getting, because they're going through the grand jury and through the courts. And no intervention means you're out here to continue abusing alcohol, drugs, or whatever. But by the black men going into the system, that intervention starts, and they are not out here abusing themselves, but they are leaving a lot of children behind. And the police and nobody else can get children to put down guns. It takes parents. But if one parent is not there, your end result is all of these children causing the crime rate to go up. So all I'm asking you guys is to check and see if the grand jury process is working against black men that might can stop a lot of these children growing up without fathers committing violent crimes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. Wurdecker?
Yes, is it Mr.?
Mr. Falk?
Mr. Falk?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Just wanted, just want to let you know that the issue, the issue that you are raising is a social problem that is in this country and has been here for a long time. There's a book, Slavery by Another Name, you might want to check out, where it talks about the mass incarceration of black males as a social structure, not for safety but for control. And so what you are addressing is on point, and that's why when you elect persons to positions like this, you're to make sure you're putting people in place that are conscious, because if they're conscious, they're not going to govern by consensus, but they're going to govern by truth. And so when you have persons that are conscious to what is happening, not only in the community, but what's happening worldwide, then when positions like a chief of police, a fire chief, when those positions become open and we put people in place that know about culture and changing culture, then you will start seeing some of those issues addressed locally. But what you are bringing up is an issue that is being discussed and highlighted worldwide. And so I appreciate you saying that, but just want to let you know, that's, that's why hopefully we will do the right thing and put people in place that are sensitive to those issues that you are raising.
Yeah, I'm just a little upset, simply because
You should be.
A lot of people are saying that the mayor, it's because of the mayor, or because they stripped the budget, this is what caused 27 homicides.
Well, we know that, we know that's not true. We know that's not true.
Yeah, but you know, you still got to come up and speak it.
No, we know that's not true, because, the reason it's not true is, is because one person is not responsible for crime.
Exactly, yes.
I have not seen any other city in Hampton Roads where the mayor has been made accountable for the crime in that city. I haven't seen anywhere else, only here. And so the reality of it is that we have to deal with the truth. And there are some who do not want to deal with the truth, but they want to run with a mob mentality and run with false information and lynch folks off of what they think they know, but not the truth. And so I encourage you to search for the truth, because I noticed no one came up here critic, no one came up here criticizing the actions of the sheriff. No one criticized the actions of a sheriff who makes a sexual innuendo. I didn't hear anyone call that a disgrace. I didn't hear that, but yet, but yet we've criticized, we criticized the mayor. So I just want to say, I just want to say, search for the truth. Search for the truth, and the truth will set you free.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Thanks for coming. Ma'am Clerk?
Mr. Joe Elder? Is Mr. Elder still here? Okay. Ms. Maggie McGruder? Has she gone to?
All right, we're on the road.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Maggie McGruder, and I live at 111 High Street here in Portsmouth. I've lived here all my life. I'm here tonight to tell you how important it is for our city council to do the right thing for all the people in our city. I have been concerned with this council ever since you passed the budget cuts. When you made the cuts with the firefighters, the cuts with the policemen, gave the city workers a raise when we didn't have a lot of money, and then you increased our taxes. We knew, we know who voted for that. That vote did not help any citizens in this city, so what was the purpose of doing that? The people of this city are not happy right now, but it seems like the city council is not really caring. As we go forward, I hope you will listen to our citizens and hear what we are trying to say to you, and what we want for our city, and what our concerns, our concerns are. We don't want the best for the white citizens, and we don't want what's best for just the black citizens. We want what is best for everyone in our city. If someone on city council has hated their heart, they should not be up there, because they will not be because they will not be effective in our city. We should all work together. No one on city council should pull us apart when we have all lived here together for so long in harmony. Everyone deserves a good life in our city. I see plenty of apartments being built in downtown Portsmouth, but why so many storefronts empty on High Street? I see too many houses for sale in Portsmouth as I ride through the neighborhoods. And if our taxes go up anymore, there will be even more people leaving our city. We can bring the people back to Portsmouth with all the great, great history here. We have to stop working together and not be the daily entertainment in our newspaper. Thank you for listening for me today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Mr. Garland Alexander.
Now, I gave you an hour last night on the phone, so you only get three minutes here tonight, okay? Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
How you doing?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members, and the City Manager. I can't, I didn't really come to speak tonight, but I sit in the work session and heard the conversation, and I've talked to several of the council about this. It makes it sound like, and I'm talking about the HRA money that was taken back, it sounds, it makes it sound like by the new city manager that it was a gift and it was a great deal for the people that received it. That's not the case. And besides that, there was nothing in any of the, I got all the communications when this went on, and there was nothing in any communication from the manager's office, which was Mr. Rowe at the time, or the, the human resources that was putting on these committee meetings, I mean, these meetings would exchange, one exchange, that said anything about it being a pilot program. Now, we all understood, or most of us did, it was involved, and I talked in depth to the Ms. Rose McKenney about this, a lot of questions was arising, and I talked to one exchange in depth to try to get all, handle all this. And we understood that it was a funding item by council in the future, each, each year. But we also understood that it was funded in the budget for this year and next year. And when I questioned that, they said what this means, and that was from the manager and staff, that what that means this year and next year means from April 1, which we started this, to June of 15, and next year meaning from July 1 of 15 through June of 16. But the manager came here, and she sees fit, by whatever reason, to cut it off as of January. Now, to make it personal a little bit, during this interim period, when we were put out of the system, we, as individuals, could go to any insurance company, and they had to accept us with our condition, health condition. They couldn't, they had to accept us, as is. During that time between, in January, I came down with some heart problems. So I would have never, I did change my plan a little bit from an N to an F during that period. But I would have never stayed in this program, because there was a better program out there, which was Aetna had, which had a G plan, and some of you may not know what that means, but it was more beneficial for me to go to that. But because I believed in the city that they wouldn't turn their backs on city employees, this is citywide, all your city employees that's over 65, and the city's going to save over $2 million to give out about a half a million, and it's a good deal to get the city out from under all the liability, I didn't believe they would turn their back on them. And Exchange One relayed that too, that they thought that it would be continued. Had I, had I known it was only going to last nine months, I would have never, never, with a heart problem, I would have never stayed in for this, this bait and switch that this turned out to be. So I ask all you council people, I've called some of you, if you got any questions, please, I will be glad to go over it, or maybe you want to ask the prior city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll get to the bottom of it. And you were in the work session as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you heard the, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. And again, I want to thank everybody else for coming, and good night.